Okay, six o'clock. Call the November meeting order.
Stand to fledge of allegiance.
Fledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick remembrance here of my cousin Brenda Lindsey. She was the daughter of Charlie Lindsey, who was the town manager for several years. Unfortunately, she's passed away due to cancer. All right, let's have a seat. So we've got to hear that announcements coming over. Doesn't that, doesn't that come under all our communication now?
It can.
Yeah. All right, so the ethics statement. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the council, all council members have a duty to conduct repairs of the governing body, I mean governing board, in an open and public manner, free of conflicts of interest. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct substantial readily identifiable physical impact for any council member, his or her family, or close business associations?
No.
Does any council member have a financial interest in any public contract committed for this council today?
No.
There being none, all council members have a duty and obligation to vote. We have a proclamation here. Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month, whereas American Indian Heritage Month, also known as Indigenous People Heritage Month, honors and celebrates the important heritage of tribal communities within North Carolina's recognized tribes and Indian organizations. Whereas North Carolina is home to eight state-recognized tribes, the Eastern Band of Cherokee, the Kohari Lumbee Tribe of North Carolina, the Halawa, Suponi, the Seponi, the Maharin, the Okanichi Band of the Suponi Nation, and the Wakama Seon. Hope you all understood those. Whereas Indigenous people of this area lived before forming bands west of the Mississippi, they were disgracefully forced, forcibly displaced by the federal government through the Trail of Tears and Indian Removal Act during the 1800s, a period of indigenous ethnic cleansing in our nation's history. And whereas today, there's more than 130,000 North Carolinians who identify as American Indian living in all 100 counties, making it the second-largest American Indian population east of the Mississippi River and the seventh-largest American Indian population in the United States. Whereas the town of Black Mountain recognizes Indigenous people have lived upon this land some time since immemorial and the values of the progress our society's accomplished through the contribution of the Indians' peoples' culture. Whereas the town of Black Mountain recognizes and celebrates Indigenous people and wishes to preserve and promote the history and culture of all Indigenous people, now therefore be resolved by the town council on the, uh, that the month of November, November twenty, twenty-five be proclaimed Indigenous Peoples Month, heritage in the town of Black Mountain and commend its observance to all citizens.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that was a resolution. They wanted us to look at that.
The resolution, okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I will make the motion if we approve that resolution as read.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, the recognition Josh Harold, the town manager, for being named a top ten town manager by Government Business Review.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor of Portillo has agreed to read something.
I'm pleased to recognize Josh Harold, our town manager, for being selected as a top-ten town manager in the 2025 by Government Business Review. Mr. Harold, along with nine other town managers across the nation, were chosen by the 85,000 subscribers to the Government Business Review magazine. I've had the privilege of working with Mr. Harold for the last five years, and I can't think of anyone more deserving of this recognition. Mr. Harold grew up in these mountains in Whipps County, North Carolina, about 50 air miles from Black Mountain, where his family of seven generations made it their home. Mr. Harold began his local government career in 2008 and has served as a manager of the town of Black Mountain since October of 2018. Mr. Harold guided the town through the COVID-19 pandemic and the worst natural disaster, uh, to hit the state of North Carolina, Hurricane Helene. His vision and collaboration has strengthened community services and long-term growth for the town. He drives strategic initiatives, builds vital partnerships, and fosters a high performing municipal team. Mr. Harold's emphasis on integrity, presence, and patience have made Black Mountain a better place. His ability to keep morale high and spend time with employees and show genuine care are essential to his success. I continue to be impressed by his ability to stay focused on the end goal with so many distractions and the adversity he faces. Mr. Harold lives in Black Mountain with his wife of 17 years, Tina, and 14-year-old daughter Lily. Uh, congratulations to us.
Thank you. All right, next we've got, um, consent agenda.
Consent.
Citizen comments right now. Anybody wishing to speak? We have four. First of all, David Galloway. State your name and address, and then you got three minutes.
Great. My name is David Galloway, and I live at 103 Brookhaven Drive, uh, and I'm a member of the Recreation Commission for the town. Uh, and I'm here to discuss how the town manages the disc golf course, uh, which is to say that lately they haven't been. Uh, this year, as far as I know, it's been mowed once. Last year, three times. The previous year, also three times. So seven times in three years is embarrassing and unacceptable. This is the oldest course in all of western North Carolina. Helene took a lot from us. It shrank the town's already limited recreational resources. The front nine holes on the north side of Veterans Park may have sustained some damage, but the back nine is pretty much okay. Uh, yet they remain unplayable because the town doesn't mow the grass. You simply can't play disc golf in chest-high grass over one with briars and nettles. Of all the Herculean obstacles facing the town, this one is the easiest and cheapest to fix. Recreational opportunities are vital for mental health. Disc golf has a low barrier to entry, so many people used to play the course for a quick break into nature to center their minds and escape stress. It can be played socially or alone. Now, on my daily walks to the property, it's almost always empty. I have multiple encounters a week where residents and out-of-town visitors alike will ask me, what's going on with the disc golf course? I thought there was a disc golf course here I can play. When do you think I'll be able to play veterans again? I've run out of answers to give them, so I'm looking at you now to answer these questions. Uh, finally, um, congratulations to Mr. Harold and good luck to Mr. Hay this weekend. And it's really cold out tonight, so I hope everyone gets home safely and stays warm.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Gene Galloway.
Jim. All right, Jen Galloway, 103 Brookmount, uh, Brookhaven Drive, Black Mountain. Uh, I'd like to ask the town council, um, in getting attention and action on the maintenance of Veterans Park Disc Golf Course. I would like to know who made the decision to stop almost all mowing that happens at the park, making the course basically unplayable. If you've ever played disc golf, thrown a disc, it is not fun to play when you cannot find your discs. The course is over 20 years old and has been enjoyed by many of all ages. There previously have been youth leagues, Monday night doubles, and even a Valentine's Day Couples Love Dubs Disc Golf Tournament. Helene took the front nine, and I know that would take a lot of time to fix, but nothing but a mower is stopping the back nine from being open and enjoyed again. Please give Public Works the permission to maintain this beautiful space again. There are limited town-owned, uh, rec facilities, and I would like to see the town take care of what we have. The 2023 master plan called out disc golf for this space, and it called it out as being well utilized and enjoyed. If there has been other plans for this space, I ask that you seek input from users of this space before changing from the 2023 plan. This should be an easy item, not requiring extra space or money, just maintaining what's already there. Over the last few years, this park has gone down till downhill, so I ask the council to figure out what has changed. Thank you.
Becky Winjer.
Hi, I'm Becky Wanger. I live at Two Bowers Road. Um, I'm here to advocate for the disc golf course also, to get it mowed and to get us back out there throwing discs. Um, I also want to say, I'd like to see a left turn only, uh, sign for when you're turning left onto Montry Road from State Street. Um, because a lot of people don't realize that's left only, uh, and it creates some problems. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Shank Sean Pope.
Hey, everybody. My name's Sean Pope. Uh, I live at 344 Flat Creek. Um, a local business owner, two businesses in town. Um, not to beat a dead horse, but as the previous three people came through, it's, uh, very important that I state that I really feel the need for, uh, the back nine of the veterans' disc golf course to be mowed. Um, again, I'm a local business owner. We have, uh, a running store in town, and 2019, we actually took in inventory related to this rec activity called Disc Golf. Um, and I had never played the game before. I even brought the inventory in. Um, I started playing it in 2019 and fell in love with it, and it's been an incredible journey to, to meet people and, uh, just a communal thing that gathers people to enjoy a recreation that is very easy to walk into, uh, low cost, very easy maintenance. Um, and directly I can see the difference post-Helene to the, it, it, to the financial situation that, where, where I can see the, the difference in the stats of tourism in Black Mountain related to this recreation. Um, our store is, is a running store. It sells shoes. We don't rely on disc golf, but it directly relates to the stats. Um, you can see greatly the difference in the amount of people coming to town or in, or being in town using this recreational spot, just based off of the, the sales in that inventory that deals with, in that part of the shop with this. Um, again, this is not something that I rely on, and I'm here to argue over finance, but I can tell you that the difference in maintaining a small situation like the back nine, which we have the option and the ability to do this, uh, by just simply mowing, is, is, directly affects the tourism and activity in Black Mountain for all businesses. Um, again, there was mention of, uh, dubs tournaments and all these activities that are related to this recreational activity that people come into town and then they forego and eat dinner within the town. They spend time and, and communicate within the town. Um, so it's just, it's, it's a larger part than just people, you know, using this space. Um, uh, and that's kind of where I'm getting that, that point is, it's been a little bit of a problem forever since I started, being able to get this back nine course mowed. I've, I've never been here communicating it myself, but I've, I've known this has been a problem for a very long time. So we were kind of hoping is, if we could bring a little bit of more forefront, that this might be a, a thought process that's a little more brought up in the higher ranks. Um, so yeah, I just felt like I could come up here tonight and deliver that message.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I feel certain that the town will look into this recreation. I know that when I was during my first term as mayor, uh, I know that there was some issues that made it difficult for the players on this, on the course right by the river because of the discs would get in the river.
That's it.
So I went ahead, and so I went ahead and, uh, cut down 20 bamboo poles and put hooks on them and laid them out all of them down the river.
Yeah, no, I remember the bamboo pole by old times.
Needless to say, the water got them gone.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you all.
I'll just say I've got a meeting with Mr. Galloway on Wednesday.
Can you, can you update us with that plan something?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't have any communications from staff, councils, commissions, or agencies. The town attorney is not present, but I will say a couple of things. We are closed tomorrow in observance of Veterans Day. There will be a parade at 2:00 PM tomorrow, and we will also be closed to observe Thanksgiving on the 27th and 28th of this month. And that's all I have.
Anything from the town council?
I'd like to publicly thank the residents of Church Street, Dorsey Street, and all the surrounding streets and Laurel Circle for all their support for the community during Halloween. I'm grateful for all that they do to make that such a fun experience. And then, of course, uh, town staff who contributed and, um, support on that as well.
Well, the chief did a good job in getting that organized, so I say thank you.
There were quite a few people there this year.
The, uh, I had one lady who works at the, or who was at the Methodist stand, the tent down there that was giving out hot chocolate. Twenty-three hundred cups.
Wow.
So if there was 23 cups of hot chocolate that was given out, you know, I know everyone didn't get a cup. I estimate it, and maybe the chief, I, I think we had closer to 4,000 people. That'd be a pretty good estimate, chief.
I think that's probably, based on the last two years, I would say that's probably a good, well, coming from everywhere.
And I spend a good number of time, amount of time just thanking people for coming. All right, now let's go to the consent. Yeah, excuse me.
Well, along with the parade announcement, I just wanted to thank our veterans for their service. I know that we have a few in the room tonight, and, uh, thank you. And also, I just wanted to mention that tomorrow morning, at the currently unused, um, public services building down on 304 Black Mountain Avenue, at the Porterville, we're going to start collecting, um, non-perishable food items. It'll be cold, but we'll be there, um, every day from nine to noon, and then on Friday, Saturday mornings will be, folks can come by and pick up what they need. It's just to supplement Smollett Valley Christian Ministry because they've tight on space, and we have empty space, so we thought we'd get some volunteers and, and make it more available as a drive-through. So, um, encourage anybody that wants to make a donation or come by and volunteer. We'd be delighted to see you. Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda.
All right, consent agenda for the evening. Seven A will be approval of the council meeting minutes from August 7th through August 11th, August 13th through September 4th. Seven B will be monthly tax collector report. Seven C, a resolution repealing a resolution we did on our Saturday meeting. This was a resolution on this 25-80. This was for applying for capital grant funding for engineering construction of a new combined restroom and concession stand at Veterans Park. We actually voted on that twice, so we needed to repeal one of those. Seven D, an appointment to the Board of Adjustment alternate seat. Seven E will be a resolution budgeting Kimley Horn Design Services for Veterans Park Concessions and Restrooms. Seven F, a resolution authorizing staff to apply for the Helene Recovery Fund for Parks and Recreation Trust Fund for engineering construction of a new combined restroom and concession facility at Veterans Park. Seven G, a resolution to loan funds for grant writing services related to the water system projects from the Stormwater Utility Fund to the Water Fund. And lastly, a resolution authorizing the town to enter into an agreement with Arit Engineers P L L C for professional engineering and architectural services for Lakeview. And that's your consent agenda.
Referencing that seven H, uh, from the time, I would assume that once I signed that, that, assuming the board passes it and I signed it, how long before they can get going on this so that we can?
I think they'll get going immediately. After we let them, give them a notice to proceed, they'll get going immediately. Um, I would think a few weeks to get something done so we can start actually.
Can they try to break that down into the two things to do one upstairs first and then do downstairs? Because the downstairs is certainly going to take a lot longer.
Yeah, this is just, this will be really looking at for the upstairs first. That's what we're going to be doing.
This is just for upstairs?
That's correct. That downstairs is going to wait.
Well, let's hope we can, and then, and then when they finish, then we just have to get the permit.
Correct.
And then get a bid.
Correct.
Yes. All right, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
In discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously.
No public hearings, no unfinished business, and then you got citizen No public hearings, no unfinished business, and then you've got citizen comments again.
Anybody want to speak again? Not? New business?
The business will be two items. Eleven A will be recommendation to lower speed limit on South Ridgeway Avenue and Sutton Avenue from twenty-five miles an hour to twenty miles an hour. And I mentioned this to you in the agenda meeting on Thursday evening last week. The Active Mobility Commission put this forward. They wanted to see this after our discussions on, about South Ridgeway a few months ago, and they'd like to see it lowered to twenty miles an hour instead of twenty-five.
Is Sutton, Sutton on the other side of Nine or Broadway is twenty miles an hour? Is that correct?
I'm not sure, Councilmember Hay. If it's not, it will be if you pass this.
So, because that would, that would, they.
It's just around the whole length of Sutton and the whole length of South Ridgeway.
I would, I think, I'm pretty sure that all the streets down in the central business district in that side are twenty. But if they're not, then, you know, anything that's coming off of Sutton or going into Sutton.
We'll need to bring it back to you later if it's not.
Yeah.
If you want to change that too.
Well, I would just want to, I would just want to make sure that there's not like twenty, twenty-five, twenty, you know, like that it's cookies.
Safety is certainly a concern. I would, of course, I don't have a vote on this, but my, my recommendation would be to put, if we're looking at protecting the health and general welfare, to put two speed humps up on South Ridgeway. Because the distance between the curve and the stop signs and the stoplight and everything is not enough to get a speed up there.
And I was hoping, I've got some staff that's got the flu and they're out. I was gonna, Jamie was gonna give y'all kind of an update tonight on some of that stuff. Since that meeting a couple of months ago, we've gotten some different options. Speed bumps, speed humps.
Speed bumps, yeah, hot speed bumps.
All that thing, all that stuff. So, we have looked at that, and I want to, I want to bring that to you. And we'll see what it was going to be tonight, but.
Can we plan to have that for December?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Chief. What, going from twenty-five to twenty, is that?
So, I mean, really where it plays into effect is those people going four or five miles an hour over in the twenty compared to the twenty-five. So, instead, you're twenty-nine where you start piquing our interest and maybe lowering speeds because we're typically not pulling someone for the absolute speed of one mile over, but it would make that difference there. I will say, I know I served on a traffic safety commission with DOT for years, and I know there have been some suggestions on speed humps. And I know we've talked about traffic calming policy. It's been difficult with everything else going on. But speed humps are a very difficult resolution because oftentimes you find people who hit the hump and accelerate and get an in-between high speed. And once you find a resolution for those at one street, how do you stop them from another? And usually, they try to go with the consistency statewide of an eighty-five percentile of eight miles an hour over the speed limit is what is state-recommended by DOT. That way, that there is some type of actual study and data on why you're putting those in so that people can't just put them in wherever they may go. That's just, that's a sidebar. I mean, I don't care one way or the other. It's just, that's just information.
Thank you.
I mean, speed limits are only as helpful as they are enforced, right? I appreciate this. I think it makes sense, a lot of sense. Or do we have a plan for, you know, increasing enforcement or visibility within the, for police cars for at least a time being, or, you know, like?
I think we would do our best to do that, especially for changing the speed limit.
We would, we would do an education blitz first so that we're letting the community know about the change. Try to make sure that the environment's very, you want the signs to be environmentally changed so that people lower their speeds, like it's just not a suggestion. And then we would enforce that based off of that after a while, just like we did the stop sign.
I was going to say, just like you did the four-way stop.
We waited, we did warnings, we did an education blitz, and then we moved towards enforcement. And we would let people know that as well.
We still have folks that drive that turn off Montry Road down the wrong way. That's usually daily still.
And if I could solve, I would be rich. We had somebody going eighty-nine down Montry last month.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
I would move to lower the speed of South Ridgeway and Sutton Avenue from twenty-five to twenty miles per hour as recommended.
In discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Well, if we've got signs in stock, we will get this done ASAP. Not a lot of orders. It'll take a few days, but we will let folks know. This will be blasted out on socials and our website, and so folks will be aware of that change. Eleven B, consideration of ordinance to amend the town code of ordinance as chapter forty-seven, which is traffic and vehicles, specifically Article five to add a new section, forty-seven dash one sixty-five for wheel vehicles other than bicycles and skates. So, currently, your town code regulates bicycles and skates, and those are not allowed on the sidewalks in the central business zoning. What this one will do is make against the code, you will not be able to do scooters, hoverboards, skateboards, motorized vehicles, unicycles, one-wheels, et cetera, on sidewalks in the CB. So, this is, this is in addition to the bicycles and skates. And honestly, we had this discussion in the agenda meeting. I don't think half of these existed when this ordinance was adopted years ago. And with the number of folks we have in town on a regular basis, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have these types of vehicles, if you will, on the sidewalks in central business. So, I read that, that statement to you. It's really straightforward, actually.
Did this come about mostly because of electric, you know, like one-wheels and things like that, or is?
I think it's been a number of different things, Councilmember Hay, from that to the one-wheels. Those types of folks being on sidewalks in CB and actually folks seeing almost near misses of people getting right over with them on sidewalks.
Are all of these allowed on the road?
I don't know, Chief. Do you allow scooters on the road, hoverboards, skateboards? I mean, how those are on the road?
I mean, they're pretty much, there are some laws against them using them in certain areas in certain ways, but that's very broad. And it would have to be dependent upon where, what, what you were looking at and why. Can they go on roadways? Yes, just like pedestrians can go on roadways. But all, all that right-of-way stuff, all that different thing, that plays a part in it. And I would have to have a specific question to answer this.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, people use one-wheels, electric scooters, a lot of these.
Bicycles.
Bicycles, you know, all the time to get, get across town. If I am going from my house to a restaurant on a one-wheel, am I, you know, am I allowed to take it on the road? I mean, I guess, are we prohibiting people from trans, from using transportation?
No, and I think, I think the, obviously, like, we've had things come up now that there's electric bikes and different things like that, and they can use a roadway. But UTVs have their own regulation, right? That's a motorized vehicle. So, if we started talking about motorized, it would be different. That's not what this is talking about. Skateboards, skates, electric vehicles, I think, are some of those. But I don't think that they fall in the categories of the UTV part. So, they would still be able to operate within the roadway as long as they were doing it properly. They still have to follow the same laws, the vehicular laws at that point. Like bicycles, you know, they have to do the turn signal. They're supposed to do turn signals and have headlight lamps at night and stuff. I'm not saying they all do, but we know they're supposed to.
I always use my hand signal.
You were good.
You know, I'm thinking, I know this is probably against the letter of the law, probably not the spirit of the law, but a four-year-old on a little scooter walking with their parent, you know, I'm just trying to think of how this is actually going to impact certain, certain people. Is that, um, I mean, or even a, like, wheeled vehicles, does that include strollers?
No. And this doesn't have to be, if you want to play with this language more, we can bring this back at another meeting. This doesn't have, we don't have to vote on it tonight. And if you've got some reservations, I think it's.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to create any trouble here, but just thinking if we're.
I know strollers did cross my line at the agenda meeting, but it's not the same thing. But that's not the same thing.
So, it must have been brought up by somebody that had concerns, right? That this is a problem, an increasing problem on sidewalks in town.
Yeah.
So, I have doubt that we do need to do something. I don't think anybody intended to make it hard for strollers and that kind of thing. Do you think we need to tweak it to make it enforceable? Do you have words now?
I would have to, I have not looked at it. I was on vacation. So, I think, you know, obviously, common sense, but we also want to make sure that we protect it from making anybody not having common sense.
Yeah.
I would, if this is not a hurry, I would prefer to push this to next month. Let me do some language looking from other cities who've adopted ordinances and.
Let's do that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, so that's just tabled. All right, next thing is closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
If somebody could use the required language for the closed session, that would be fantastic. Thank you so much.
I move that we go into closed session first with the North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three dash one thirty-eight point eleven six, to discuss the performance and terms of employment of individual personnel.